President Michaelis, we are ready to go live.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call to order the regular school board meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. We have all board members present for this meeting and we're going to do the flag salute and I have asked board member Marsette to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, the board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Denina people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our virtual meeting during this COVID-19 crisis and thank you for supporting the work of the Anchorage School District. The mission of this district is educating all students for success and life. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Thank you. I'm aware of one change that does need to happen and we need to remove memo 130. It had a placeholder for insurance renewal under the action items. And so I'd like to remove that from the agenda if all board members are in favor. Not hearing anybody opposing that, were there any other board members that had any changes to request to this agenda? Not seeing or hearing any, I'll go ahead and approve the agenda as amended. Next up, we have our board conference and committee reports. Finance Chair Marsette, if you could please give us a quick update on your meeting today. You're on mute.
Okay, I'll find that. We did have a meeting today. We talked about our audits for the next coming year. We've identified four of those audits that we'll be doing for our next school year: student transportation, school entry security, field trips, internal controls, and information technology backup. We also went over our CARES money that we received and our allocation, showing that we have about one point something left of our CARES money. That may change depending on how things happen. Also, out of the $2 million that the board had allocated out of the general fund, they're showing just a little bit left over, but not much there. We are trying to get Chromebooks into hands of all of our students currently. We have dispersed about 10,000. We are looking at about 37,000 Chromebooks to be dispersed along with Wi-Fi capabilities so they have connection. And then we, that was about it. And I'll do a report on that and submit it. And our next meeting will be July 17th. The time has changed. It will be 3 to 4.
Is that July 17th or July 21st?
July, when's our board meeting? 17th, right? Oh, 21st, sorry. Something's going on the 17th. But for the board meeting on the 22nd, we will have our finance committee from 3 to 4.
Thank you. Board Member Hildy, Chair of the Governance Committee.
Thank you. I had a written report, but I must not have submitted it in time. So I will have that out for the public for the next meeting. But we review, we have an annual review cycle for board policies. We're going to meet on June 22nd to go over those. It's going to be like mostly silent reading and then just making a list. So anybody's welcome to come, but we're not going to be like discussing or making decisions. It'll just be making a list to discuss at our next governance meeting. So that's June 22nd via Zoom, 10 a.m. We're working on a superintendent valuation timeline. So Members Mitchell and I presented a draft of that. We took some feedback and we'll present it at the next meeting. Member Marsette is working on community invitation and purchase tickets policy. So we should have that at our next meeting. We'll have one on crowdfunding in the fall from the administration. And then we'll talk about the policy on recruitment after we get our board goals finalized. Member Bellamy will come back so that our policy is in line with our board goals. And wellness policy, the recess and lunch, that's going to continue this fall with the pilot. And then administration will review the committee draft from last year and present it back to the governance committee in the fall. So we don't have a July meeting set. If we can get it picked right now, if that's possible, that'd be great to just do it right now with everybody here. Maybe Friday, the 10th, right before the board retreat. I know everybody wants to do fun summer things, so I don't want to take up your extra days.
Would that be the same time?
That's a Friday, the 10th. We have board retreat from 12 to 5. I don't know if you want to do governance before then, if that's too much. It doesn't really matter to me, I guess, is what I-
That works for me, Alyssa.
And this is my fun summer thing.
Okay, so I'll put governance on for Friday, the 10th, from 11 to 12, July 10th. And then I don't know what communications wants to do theirs.
Okay, I'll follow you. All right, well, Chair Bellamy, if you would like to give a quick update on the Communications Committee, this would be an excellent time.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So the Communications Committee met on June 9th. We had five items on our agenda. We spent most of our time drafting a letter which the board will vote on tonight in response to the events that are happening within our nation following the death of Mr. Floyd. We also revised, well, we discussed revising our timeline for the strategic planning and that will be shared with you, with the board and the public. If not tonight, then at our next meeting. All of that has been on hold since COVID plans are in place. And then we had, the Communications Department gave us our June update, community update, which I sent to all of the community, well, I sent to the Federation of Community Councils. We will send that out to all of the community councils and board members may use it as a go-to their community council meetings. We discussed the June 10th celebration, which started last weekend and it will continue through at the Northway Mall at various times this week. And so that is also on our website, on the district's website. So you can find more information there. And we sent a letter of sympathy to the Minneapolis Public School Board because they lost a member, I think her name was Marnie Zian, to COVID. And so we did a draft and send that letter, note of sympathy, to that board. And our next board meeting, since we always like to partner and follow the Governance Committee, we will meet as well on July, I think, what did you say, 10 or 11?
I put it at the 10th. We got board retreat from noon to 5.
Okay. So, and I would like, we always follow her, so it will be the same date at 12, from 12 to 1.
So we'll have to put this on a calendar and take a look at it and see how it works with the board retreat. But what I hear you both saying is you'd like to have it on the 10th before the retreat.
Before the retreat.
Okay.
Retreat's at noon, isn't it?
Yeah, and we'll be, yeah. The retreat starts at, what time?
At noon.
It does start at noon. Okay, so then we will not be meeting on that, at that time, on that day. So I will, I'm not sure we even need to. So I will advise the board at a different time if needed. I'll let you know. So at this point, Communications does not have a July meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. The other thing I would like to give or receive an update on is, I believe, Board Member Marsette has had a chance to look at the timeline for the Strategic Planning Committee. It's an ad hoc committee of the board. And if you had something you wanted to update and report on, that would be wonderful.
And I think Katie can pull this up. Katie, can you pull it up so everybody can see it? There we go. So if you look at this, we drastically changed the time just because of what's going on. But what we're looking at in our retreat in July is to develop our goals for ASD. They may change, given that the last time we did this has been some time. And so we'll revisit the ones that we were working on and our guardrails. And then after that, we're going to initiate in a work session, a initial draft, and we need to present that, goals and guide rails to our community. That will be in September and October and with our partner organizations. We will also have our first public reading and discussion in December. That's when we'll get our public feedback. And then the second public reading and adoption of new goals will be in January. February 2021 is when we will have the action plan to achieve those goals and have the board review that. And then we will probably present those, I would say, the end of February, first of March, to execute. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is our goal monitoring portion. This is titled Preliminary Survey Results. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Dina Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to share with the board that we had spoken about this and the board had asked questions in regard to how did the spring turn out. We participated with a national survey, actually, research firm, Hanover, and as well as other large districts similar to ourselves. And so the questions were constant. We can not only look at our responses, but we can look at our responses as compared to what other school districts around the country. We're sharing the data with you. We only have ASD responses. The full data set and cleanup has not been released by Hanover, but they did allow us to have our own data to present to you today. Dr. Stock is going to share the results and speak to really the items, kind of the biggest thoughts that have come out of this in regard to parents, students, as well as staff, their feelings, their ideas, their interests, everything in reflection of the last nine weeks. And of course, these data are being used to assist in guiding the planning for next year. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stock. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Good evening, members of the board. So what we're going to do is we're going to do a real quick, high-level summary of the results and I'll hit a few of these main points. And then we're going to move real quickly through some of the data screens that show some of the results. And like Dr. Bishop has mentioned, Hanover will be providing a more robust white paper regarding all the results and some comparisons to other districts in the nation later on this summer. So this research was done between June 1 and June 12. There was a series of Likert scale questions that were presented to parents, students, and staff. The parents were by far the largest response group. And looking through the demographic portion, the respondents were very much similar to all our other surveys, which have been for quite some time, have been heavily dominated by the white, middle-class females, which has been typical of all of our other surveys in terms of who's been submitting responses. The general view from the public, from the students, parents, and staff, was that distance learning ranged from somewhat worse to much worse than how they viewed in-person learning. We'll get to some of that detail in a minute. But the second one was that respondents were overwhelmingly somewhat negative to very negative about continuing distance learning in the next year, based on their spring experience. Students, parents, and teachers did share a general feeling that remote learning had negatively affected their learning. However, it's interesting because there are some slight differences in between students and staff in regards to how they're viewing how negative that was. The students, parents, and staff agreed that schools have been slightly effective to moderately effective at educating students. Now, this is one that we're going to have to dig into because it's a little bit of an anomaly. Because on one hand, they're saying they're feeling it's affected them negatively. They weren't positive about distance learning, but when asked about its effectiveness, slightly effective to moderately effective. So it's kind of an interesting juxtaposition of how they feel about that. Next slide. Staff felt the district was very effective to extremely effective in its communication with them. This was probably overwhelmingly the most robust finding in the entire report, which was that through this whole thing, Communication Department and the superintendent's communication, and through our senior leaderships in elementary and secondary and teaching and learning and sped, special education, they felt like there had been a good flow of communication. Parents and students were also positive about the communication that went from the school site directly to students. They agreed overwhelmingly. Students and parents, it was very overwhelming that they agreed their teachers did care about them. So if there's one thing that came out of this whole pandemic thing and all the crisis, was that it reaffirmed the fact that our teachers care about those that they work with. Students, parents, and staff did agree, however, that remote learning had a neutral to a somewhat negative impact on their mental and emotional health. It was interesting because students felt a little bit more negative about that than their parents and teachers did. So sometimes you would think of it as the opposite, but here, the students themselves felt like it had an impact on their mental and emotional health. Probably the greatest benefit or success of distance learning, and everyone recognized it, all three groups, was that students who could work at their own pace, that they could move ahead quickly, or they could go slower depending on their own pace of learning. And that was probably the greatest success that they experienced. About one-fourth of them felt that the parents were more engaged. And that also held up with what the teachers felt. And parents both recognized that they were more engaged with their children's learning as a result of what happened. So those were the high-level results. And we'll go through real quickly some of the next slides that show some of the data. As you can see here, the response rate, 63% came from the parents, which we expected. Next slide. Preliminary demographics, as you can see here, this just demonstrates that the female population is much more inclined to submit survey results than males. And that was also true among students. You can see twice as many female students submitted responses as male students, and so on. Same way with parents. Thinking about your experiences with distance learning, how does it compare with in-person learning? And this one, as you can see, students, parents, and staff heavily weighted towards the negative, that it is either somewhat worse or much worse than what we experience when we're face-to-face in an environment. However, there is a 10% difference between how staff felt about it at the much worse level than the students. If you combine the two numbers together, they're not as far off. But if you look at just much worse, you'll do see that the staff themselves were more heavily weighted that way. Next slide. How do you feel about next year was one of the questions. And here, this one I found fascinating because if you look at staff, only 35% were very negative about it, but 56% of the students were very negative about it in terms of they want to be with their friends, they want to get back, they want to experience the whole thing called school. And for many of them, they weren't perhaps looking forward to a full year of being in distance learning. So that was interesting. Next slide. How effective was your school at communication? Here you can see it's weighted towards moderately effective and very effective. Weight for both students and parents felt like the school was good about communicating with them. How effective has the district been? This is the one about instructional staff. And this one, as you can see, moderate and very, and extremely effective, very heavily weighted towards effective communication on the part of the district. How effective was your school at educating? And the students were asked about educating themselves, parents about educating the children, and then how did the staff feel about how effective were they at educating the students? And you can see here, not as negative, it's kind of in the middle there, between slightly and moderately effective were the most heavily weighted items.
Dr. Stock? Could you go back to that question?
Is this the one you're referring to, Mr. Donnelly?
Is that effective during the remote instruction or effective overall?
The assumption was that it was during the pandemic because the entire thing, now, it is very possible, Mr. Donnelly, that other, we don't know how individual respondents were thinking when they answered it. So that's a very good question. We don't really know how they were thinking. But the survey itself was intended to be focused on the experience during the pandemic, but we don't know for sure. That's a good point. So the next slide. How much do you disagree or agree with the following statements? And the student says, my teacher cares about me. And you can see all of these heavily weighted to the end. You can see a bit of a difference between how the staff feels about that they're caring for the students and how the students agree on the strongly agree. You'll see there's a very difference there at some levels, but the staff themselves feel that way. But overwhelmingly weighted to the positive. What kind of impact has this move had on the following? So when we ask students about, how has this affected your personal learning? You'll see that there's some 30% that said it was neutral, but you'll see that most of the responses in all three parts are skewed towards the negative. It wasn't particularly positive for any of the groups. What impact has the move had on the following, your mental health? So the students were asked about their mental health, the parents about the child's mental health. And it's interesting, you see a difference there between the student's view of their mental health and perhaps how their parents are seeing it a little bit. And definitely different in terms of how the staff viewed it in that somewhat negative category. Next slide. Which of the following successes have there been? And this is where you can see 57% of the student responses said that I can work at my own pace. That's the highest level of success that they could experience. The next highest was the fact that they can learn the material. And which of them, as far as more successes, you can see that the child working at the same pace. When we look at, how did parents feel about that? Parents are saying that the number one success was their children learning at their own pace. And then the 28%, that one of the positives was that the parents are acknowledging that I was more engaged with my child's learning because of necessity, essentially. And a few more from the staff, these come from our teachers. Each of my students can work at their own pace, 52% said that was the biggest success. And the parents being engaged, 25%. And to lesser degrees, the others. And one of our last questions was about how much time do you spend on schoolwork each day? And this one was kind of interesting, at least to me. Look down there, students say they, 29% of them say they're spending four more hours, but the parents are going, eh, 14% say that. So maybe they don't get to see what they're all doing. Most of them agreed around the two-hour mark. You see 26 and 24% there. So that was the responses from our folks regarding the Hanover survey. We'll clean, Hanover will be cleaning and scrubbing the survey for anomalies and taking out things that didn't make sense. And then they will be doing a full white paper for the board here this summer, and we will provide the full resort results to you at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. I see that Board Member Mitchell has her hand raised in the queue.
Yeah, I was just curious, Dr. Stock, how many teachers completed the survey? I couldn't remember what you put up at the beginning.
Let's go back. I think it was in the thousands. Let's see how many we got there. Staff response is 1,228.
So that-
That would be in the area of a third, roughly.
Okay. And do you think they were all teachers?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I mean, they would be the primary ones, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Dr. Stock, for the information. I have two questions. The first one has to do with the, well, they both have to do with demographics. It's very obvious that surveys are not working for our ethnic families. And I don't know what to do about that, but I was wondering what your thoughts were on that. And then the second question, also a demographic question, has to do with what was the breakdown of the demographics for the students?
We have that information. I can get that for you in a board connect with all the details. Just for the sake of brevity tonight, we didn't break it out in all those pieces, but I have that data and we will be able to provide that for you.
Okay. And your thoughts on how to get more input from families other than through this, through the survey process?
Very good question. So we've been struggling with that for years around our district, around how best to do that. Some of the other ways of doing it, that we use a mix of qualitative methods like we did with the wellness piece, where we had somebody interviewing and talking. The problem there is that, you know, who has time to come in during the middle of a day and do that when they're working? So we still get-
Some, yeah. And I think it was right along Dr. Stock's. It's really in regard to that family engagement, not necessarily through a survey, but if we're engaged with our different student groups and community groups and communicate the need for the data, they understand us, they see us, they trust us. Because we did, Dr. Stock and his team did have this translated. It was available in home languages. That wasn't the roadblock, we don't believe. It's probably that front-end family engagement.
I would share one other piece to it that comes in that's probably less of an ethnicity and more of a poverty issue. And that is that they're, when given a voluntary survey about the income in the home and people don't have to fill it out, they can mark, I prefer not to respond. But for those that fill it out, overwhelmingly, the income levels, when you get to 70,000, 80,000 and up, they dominate the surveys. Below 70,000, 80,000, the families in poverty are not either accessing it or getting them or filling them out. So we do need to look at some other methods.
We've learned that building relationships and avenues for those two-way communications is going to be essential to gain the knowledge that we need to meet student and family needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Donnelly.
And you, Chair, I think we need to exercise a lot of caution in interpreting this survey, especially the questions about satisfaction with the remote learning, because there's no comparison involved here. If we had questions that compared what the school district, what ASD did versus another district, or even what those parents that used ASD versus those parents that were using the Florida Virtual School, which was available through the state website, then we'd have a much more accurate ability to judge it. But just on its own, it's difficult to know whether it's an opinion about what just ASD did and not on the actual potential of remote learning.
Well, through the President to Mr. Donnelly, the only thing I would add to that would be that that's actually a limitation of all surveys, is that we don't always know what context people read their questions into. So it was a national survey, and I think that's part of the limitation you're referring to, Mr. Donnelly, is that it wasn't an ASD survey. It was a national survey, so the questions are somewhat generic in that response.
And through the President as well, through, to add to Dr. Stock, not necessarily to answer your specific question, he answered that in regard to the survey. However, part of ASD's plan is for a K-12 virtual experience where students are tied to their schools, more robust and rigorous, using curriculum. This summer, we've offered many different options to parents. Some of them are redundant, just trying to see where parents and students engage and what they, what kind of feedback they're giving us. This summer, an ex- This summer, an experience with Florida Virtual with APACs were all available to students. And so part of our planning for next year not only includes, as the task force had shared, a blended learning where we need to be prepared to be in school and out, but also a very robust program with individualized plans for students on distance learning or what used to be correspondence learning. So that that's actually part of the bigger picture of our plans for next year.
I'm really glad to hear that. I think that's it's going to be a mandatory element that wasn't present in what happened right during the crisis here.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have board member Holloman.
I was just gonna make a comment that I think these numbers are surprisingly good in terms of reaction by by parents and students. As we go into fall, if we're not able to resume in school, everybody's going to have a much tougher hill to climb. We had a huge advantage in that this happened at the end, where three quarters of the school year had gone by. Students knew their classmates, they knew their teachers, teachers knew them, especially for our younger students in the fall. If we have to start remotely, it's going to be real difficult to create that connection. And partly just being aware that we won't be able to just pick up where we left off. We will be starting a very new experience and these numbers will be hard to match, actually, if we have to start that way. I'm sure that staff and teachers recognize that if we get to start back with students physically present, there's a danger that the year get interrupted. And I think building in, making those connections will be key to to what we do first if we if we're able to start back in a way that we normally like.
Of course, Dr. Bishop.
Sure. That's a very good point that the relationships do matter. And one of the key features of our blended, as well as the virtual school that we're going to establish is is one of the niche, the niche, however you want to say it, that ASD has is that connection to the homeschool. And so we will build capacity for the rigorous at home program, but still be able to be connected to ASD in an ASD school and actually even a neighborhood school, because we do understand that students like to be connected to those school activities, the schoolwork, the teachers there. So that's in the bigger plan. Additionally, Madam President, to answer additional information from our team, Mark and I just received information in regard to our ELL families in regard to the participation. When they did look into after understanding that there weren't very many ELL responses, they looked into it and some of the things that they found that they shared with us that they they know, the reading levels of some of our ELL parents are not at a level that this survey was written, even in their home language. And additionally, when asked how best to meet needs, they would prefer a phone call from our liaisons in regard to giving feedback rather than doing it with a on a computer or even paper pencil, just to want to add that that information we received.
Thank you for all of that. One more opportunity for board members, if you have any more questions or comments on this preliminary survey information, go ahead and raise your little blue hand. Board member Hildy.
Sorry, do you do you have data on ages? I'm just wondering if younger parents are more inclined to use the survey results and older ones less, or if it's really making a difference at all?
Through the president to member Hildy, that I'm not aware of. I'll have to go dig into the details of the questions. The demographic questions that came back in the summary printouts for us to give you a report did not indicate that we had a grade age level or a grade level on it, but I will research that. If we do, I'll provide it in a board connect.
Thank you. All right, not seeing any other hands in the queue, we will go ahead and move on to our next item in our agenda, which is public testimony on non-agenda and non-action items. And it's been a little while since I've had to read this statement, so bear with me for just one moment. With the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the school board and district staff are taking necessary steps to allow remote testimony while continuing to broadcast and record meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The school board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for telephonic testimony or to email written comments by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. These comments will become part of the meeting record. There is a one hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. If you have signed up in advance for telephonic testimony, the board secretary will call you at the number you have provided, and you have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, the board secretary will inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. Tonight, we do have three requests for telephonic testimony, and it will take Katie just a moment to call on them one at a time, which she will be doing now. Be just a brief pause.
Thank you, Madam President. I will get our first testifier on the line.
Thank you.
Ms. Hodge, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Celeste, this is Katie Grant. I'm the school board secretary calling you from our school board meeting.
Okay.
Madam President, I have Ms. Celeste Hodge on the phone.
Thank you. And Ms. Hodge, you have three minutes and you may start whenever you are ready.
Good evening, members of the Anchorage School Board. My name is Celeste Hodge Groudon. For those that don't know me, I served as president of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NAACP, the largest and oldest civil rights organization in the world, a position I held for nearly a decade. More recently, I served as the executive director for Shiloh Community Development, a nonprofit organization that advocates for the rights of people of color, the disadvantaged and youth in the areas of education, health, justice, and economics. I held that position for seven years. Today, I serve as the president and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus, a nonpartisan organization that fights for the rights of black people. This organization originated in the 70s and reestablished late last year. The events of the last few months have reminded us of the need to be more vigilant than ever in using our voice to demand continued work toward true equality and equity for black people in this country, in the state, in the city, and yes, even in the Anchorage School District. Today, I'm here to talk about the letter written by Superintendent Bishop that was emailed to families and staff. No, my kids are no longer in the Anchorage School District. However, the letter was emailed to me by a parent who was greatly disturbed. After reading the letter, I too was frustrated. The superintendent's letter states, SROs develop a professional but human connection with both the students and staff, connections which are critical to building a foundation of mutual trust. That sentence right there troubles me because we know historically, that just isn't the case with our students of color. I know because that's the community that I work with daily, and that information is discussed in various settings. I'd like to know, I'd really like to know the racial and gender breakdown of the students she's referring to that have this wonderful relationship that builds a foundation of trust. And to suggest SROs should continue in the schools after a conversation with the police chief, not families of color within our community or the students, is a top-down approach that continues the disenfranchisement of our students. We must demand more and expect more from our school district. If we are truly to embrace our diversity, we must make changes that promote true equity. As it relates to placing students on the Anchorage Police Relations Task Force, as someone who served on that task force for many years, I strongly disagree that school-aged children serve in that capacity, where they would be viewing evidence from murders and other gruesome details. Instead, how about having the students on the instead of the task force, maybe they should be in classes, learning the history of African Americans, including the history of African people before the political conflict that led to the development of slavery, the passage to America, the enslavement experience, and the contributions that African Americans make to society. The superintendent's letter was also flawed and perpetuates the kind of discrimination and disparity students of color experience within the Anchorage School District. You know, the language places the blame on students of color, she writes, it has been evident for some time that our outcomes are not equitable for our black and brown students. Collectively, they do not achieve what our white students achieve. She fails to acknowledge the historical and continued disproportionate impact of discipline on students of color, as indicated by the district's own data. There's much more I could say, but after the death of George Floyd, we all know the knee in his neck by the police officer killed him. And now the more recent death of another unarmed black man, Rashard Brooks. We can no longer wait for equity and equality in education. We must demand the knee be removed from our neck, yes, even in education. So thank you very much. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hodge, thank you for your testimony. Katie, I believe we are ready for our next person.
Thank you, Madam President. I am calling her now. Ms. Reynolds, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Reynolds, this is Katie Grant calling you from the the school board meeting. President McCallus, we have Ms. Andrea Reynolds on the phone. And Ms. Reynolds, when there's 30 seconds left, I will interrupt and just let you know that there's 30 seconds left so that you can finish your sentence.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to address Dina Bishop's email that she sent out to the school. And I wanted to point out a couple of things that were important to me as a parent that has a child, my second child going through ASD. It seems like it was a very whitewashed type of statement that she made. She discusses race, but she doesn't really talk about culture. If I want to know why the school board has known that it's been evident so long for black and brown students to be not as adequate as white in their experience, why that there hasn't been something implemented to even that out far before the statement. She talked about her SRO program that is involved in the schools and that there's never been a complaint, but I'm actually a victim of the SRO program. My first child was a graduate of South High School about six years ago, where there was a white male that was going to come to school and shoot the black student. And my I that was my son. And the way that the SRO handled it was not in a matter of being safe, it was a matter of dismissal. And I find that relevant still today. I'm worried about the safety of my students. I'm excuse me, I'm worried about the safety of my child moving forward with ASD, not only with the virus out, but with the very evident racist stance that people are not holding each other accountable for. And moving forward, what you guys are going to be implementing to make sure that my kid can go to school safe, because it seems like adults are some of the problems here. Connections make people safe. And moving forward, you guys are going to be implementing, you know, what that looks like in ASD. And I'm in favor of defunding the police. I think having them in the police, I think having the police in with the school is still setting off the same tone. And you were not there to police kids. I always thought that they were there to protect them. And that doesn't seem to be the case from the from the email that she has sent out in the statement of ASD. So I am very much in supporting of defunding the police department as an ASD, but I also am here to suggest what that might look like moving forward as far as safety, what would make me feel safer as a mom, having my black son go to your school, my mixed son go to your school, what that would look like. And and definitely would like to have more resources.
Ms. Hodge, 30 seconds.
I would like my kids to have resources. And at the end of this, I want to say that I didn't need a poem from her, I need a plan. So please keep in mind of the safety of our kids, and I don't think that the police are really making anybody feel safe right now. And I don't need to make her feel better about her recognizing race when she's not even identifying with culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds. We have one more person who is in the list for public testimony. Katie, if you could, please give her a call.
I am calling her now. Ms. Starks, can you hear me? Ms. Starks, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. Madam President, I have Ms. Amelia Starks on the phone to testify. And Ms. Starks, when you have 30 seconds left, I'll kind of intervene and just let you know that so you can have time to finish up your sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Starks, please continue when you're ready. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, Superintendent Bishop and members of the school board. I am responding to the email that was sent out last week also. I joined this meeting to inform you that as an African American woman, moving to Anchorage, Alaska, as a young parent, having also raised seven children within the Anchorage School District, several of my grandchildren are now attending school. I did not raise my children to see the world of people as a color. I raised my children to be of good character, moral standing, and a responsible member of the community. It wasn't until they became high school students that I had to begin to teach them that because of the color of their skin, society expects less of them, and therefore that they must work twice as hard, be twice as good to even be considered the same privilege as others like yourself, just for basic consideration of jobs. I'm sure that this is not a conversation that your parents had to have with you. I can only hope that your words were meant, that your recognition of color means you will do all you can do to ensure children are treated equally. I'm truly concerned about older children having witnessed the abuse of power by police all over our country, killing of our people, and that it will have an emotional toll on them. They may no longer feel safe and may even ask questions, are you here to kill me? Because social media has taught them more often than not, some police do not protect and serve. Their motion is to just kill. I'm asking the school board to hire more school counselors and advisors or support personnel to help children find their academic and civic passions so that they may thrive. Let's invest in preventing harmful or dangerous youth behaviors. The time is now for positive change. Black lives matter. My children's children's lives matter. I'm speaking today because what I have to say, it also matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to just take a very quick moment. One of the last things that I said in the introduction to the public testimony, that it is truly their time to speak and our time to listen, and that we will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. All three of these folks that testified were all on the same thing, with, you know, the highlight of being SROs in our. Um, with, you know, the highlight of being SROs in our schools. So I wanted to let the board know and let the community know at the same time that, uh, we are working with the administration to set up a community discussion on SROs that goes outside of the board and outside of the administration to, um, have these conversations that are very timely and relevant and need to happen. And right now it is scheduled for July 21st. It will be a work session starting at four o'clock. Um, it will be, uh, the board, the administration, SROs, members of the community, and anybody that, um, you know, wishes to, you know, participate and join the conversation. Um, and we are looking forward to having this discussion, uh, very much. We want to do this with, um, data, you know, to answer these questions that, you know, people have called and asked about or written and asked about. And so we're going to take the time to get that information with the administration so that we can have the meaningful discussions that need to happen. Um, and so I am very much looking forward to that. Uh, and I hope that our community, you know, will join us wholeheartedly in that conversation as well. We do have, next up is the written public testimony. Just to let folks know that we did have, uh, one, uh, person, Ms. Reagan Brooks. She submitted a written testimony. It is submitted for the record and it is part of board docs and, uh, can be read by the public as well as all board members. Moving on in the agenda, we have the superintendent update, and at this time I will hand it over to Dr. Dina Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'll wait till the, uh, just very brief few slides today. Um, wanted to start, uh, there we go. We have sports extended year, uh, planning for school start, and then I'll just, uh, make a statement, um, in regard to, uh, my communications. Um, to start, uh, sports, of course, I have started. We have had, uh, some policies out. Uh, you might see students, uh, with coaches out on our fields under a very discreet set of, uh, discipline circumstances, uh, utilizing, uh, COVID-19 questionnaires, hand washing station, other sanitation protocols, uh, as well as temperature checks. So those are going on now. Uh, but I wanted to share that Kirsten, uh, Dr. Johnson Strumpler is, uh, working with the state and specifically some other stakeholders, um, uh, Mr. Nerland, uh, as well as, uh, Mr. Winchester, working with, uh, the department, um, the commissioner of, um, Health and Human Services, uh, Commissioner Crum, uh, to really, uh, work also with Dr. Zink to create some changes so that we can, uh, really engage our students in a safe way, uh, but to maximize their participation, again, in that safe way. Uh, perhaps by, um, maybe not using number of cases, but percentage of cases in, uh, communities as well as, uh, structures for stands and, and addressing really the, the spectators, uh, i- insofar as, uh, limiting those, but having some competitions among schools, uh, addressing travel restrictions and, and travel as well, keeping communities within communities. Uh, specifically, uh, the desire and the work for this, uh, the direction for this new work, uh, are threefold. Um, that, uh, Dr. Johnson is sharing specifically that, uh, we are becoming increasingly worried about the long-term public health risks associated with students actually not participating in activities. Um, we're concerned about the depression or, or suicide or child abuse and other trauma-based health concerns that will have long-term effect in the state of Alaska. We know that kids seek this connection not only in Bush, Alaska, but here in Anchorage, the connection with other people, the connection with, uh, uh, safe adults and safe spaces uh, to participate in a sport. It is an outlet for many children. Uh, of course, we want to, uh, have them consider travel as well as, um, of things that go along with that in state championships. So we've had a few questions, uh, you know, here and there in regard to that, but want to let you know that, uh, ASD is taking a lead with the state and, uh, Dr. Johnson can answer any of your questions that, that may come through. But, uh, quite proud of that work and wanted to share that that will continue. Uh, we've had, uh, many, many happy responses that, uh, from parents that their children are able to participate with their friends given these measures we've put in place, and we're working to expand them. The second item was in request, uh, a response rather, to Member Bellamy's question. Uh, we did share, uh, a huge increase in summer opportunities. And again, we established summer opportunities and really opened them wide up because we predicted that, uh, we perhaps would, uh, really multiply that summer slide that we see just having three months off. Uh, the lack of connection and, and we really could, could see some of those things or understand some of those ideas from the survey that we shared in regard to really needing that face-to-face connection and missing that. And that most likely, uh, would affect, uh, we, we shared with the people who actually responded to the survey, it affected them, and we can imagine others as well, uh, that same trend would carry on for those that didn't. Um, but the question was specifically was, uh, those that are extending, uh, the school year, uh, one of those options was to not shut off the end of the school year, but extend it to June 30th for the courses that kids were already in in fourth quarter. And the question was, how many of those are seniors? And if you take a look, 440 seniors actually did receive an F uh, that last, um, on that semester grade. And 98 of those seniors are back to actually make up that grade, to not have the F. Uh, our assumption, uh, we haven't dug down into each of these 98 students, uh, transcript, but our assumption is that they need that. Um, they want to change that grade and they need that F, uh, to pass or to do whatever it is that they want to do later on, uh, if they received an F and it's not good for, um, a work study or a college or a military application or, or whatever it is, or even to graduate, uh, that they would need that. Other students, uh, just having an F, there's plenty of coursework overtime in a, in a student's, um, uh, education that if it's not one of the specific courses that we have listed that they have to pass, they could pass, uh, school and still graduate with an F on their transcript. So wanted to, to share that. But those are the data that were requested. About, uh, 22% of the kids, seniors specifically, are still engaged. Um, Member Bellamy, that was your question. And then, uh, wanted to share also push for, for plans for next year. And we're going to have a more detailed, uh, report from the school task force. It is in the non-action items. But I wanted to share that our goal for today is really to get, uh, a response and a look for direction from the board, not an official vote, but, uh, more so in a straw poll, if you will, that we're moving in the right direction. Uh, we are task force, course, uh, working groups, if you will, uh, for teachers are, are basically, um, established, um, you know, working, but they're at a standstill to understand how to prep, uh, the shells for the, the courses that teachers can utilize for next year. And we'll share a little bit more about that. The task force, um, did, uh, review, um, many, many, and again, uh, Dr. Stock will talk about the membership of the 36 members who are on this task force, that the information fed up, uh, to, from the working groups and from, uh, other planners around the district, uh, in the different constructs from safety, um, from, uh, cleanliness, uh, sanitation, uh, instructional programs, both at the elementary and middle level. And they, uh, juxtaposed those against, uh, and reviewed the relevant ASD requirements, as well as they prioritize the models to maximize that face-to-face time with students throughout the school year, understanding what we knew, uh, from the, the survey, understanding what we know from the Aspen Report, uh, that learning is both social, emotional, and academic and cognitive, and that those two pieces, uh, will bring the, the biggest bang for our buck and return on our investment with students. It doesn't mean that connections can't be made online. It's just that, uh, a whole system actually isn't prepped and, and, and prepared and trained in that type of engagement, uh, that we need for that, for that type of learning, um, ubiquitously. Uh, we prioritize models that were more consistent and reliable throughout the school year for parents, students, and staff. Uh, taking the feedback from parents, uh, if you recall from the end of the year, uh, the, um, AEA and, uh, had some members as well as working with the administration and specifically in teaching and learning to really decide on a platform to use for next year. And, and that was based off of the feedback from students and parents saying, um, you know, the, the different platforms that teachers were using were great oven in themselves, one by one, but when I had to use six or seven, it was difficult. And, and we can liken this, uh, to, if you, say you went on Amazon and you needed to order something. If you had to order women's clothes, you'd use one platform. If you had to order, uh, men's clothes, you use another. If you wanted to order home goods, you'd have to use a different platform. It, it just doesn't make sense. Parents want to use a platform and be able to get to, uh, those different subjects, if you will, uh, easily, more easily. And so, uh, we came together and chose Canvas as that shell. But I wanted to share that the, the many, many, uh, different, uh, models that we looked at, uh, before we share some of the ideas about the direction we're going today, were AM and PM models, one-day models for all students, two-day models for all students, uh, two-day models at 50%, four days at 50% models, week-on, week-off models, partial day models, uh, only online models, only having K3 in school, having everyone else online, only having 712 online, everybody else in school, and various and combinations of all that I had discussed. Uh, there were very, very many that went to the task force, and the task force, uh, has made some determination and wanted to get back to the board before they continue the work. And so, again, these are for medium risk, which we believe by those designations that ASD will most likely find ourselves in unless something drastically changes this summer, uh, either for the good or drastically changes. And, uh, certainly, uh, the, uh, state may, may have, uh, call a high risk, uh, and we, we wouldn't be able to go to schools at all. Um, but again, wanted to wet the, the whistle, if you will, in regard to those plans and let the board know that we are really looking for a straw poll and want to share the direction that the task force and its members are thinking about so that we can then provide more guidance to the working groups of the educators, uh, that are, are working to prepare for next year. So, uh, with that, I just want to end and, and share a little bit of context, uh, uh, with you and the community. I appreciate all the feedback that I've, I've received and, and certainly, uh, the dialogue, um, in our country and, and in our state, in our city is, is emotional and heartfelt. Um, and again, it's really, uh, I, I want to relate it back to the many responses from thank you for your letter to, um, it whitewashed it to, um, you know, you're a racist because you use terms like black and brown. Um, those, those are, those are, uh, how people took it because, um, essentially that was the crux of the letter that we're all, we experience things differently because of, of who we are and, and, and how we learned. And my, uh, understanding when this came out, I just wanted to share a little bit that during the last two weeks and really since the George Floyd killing, I had been, uh, reading, uh, some, some literature, especially I, I, the, the most recent one I read, um, was white fragility, but reading on institutional and systemic racism, uh, as well as listening to many podcasts. Um, and, uh, I did actually, uh, participate in the National Black Caucus a couple Fridays ago. And the dialogue, uh, there, uh, helped me understand that the first thing we have to do is to understand where we are as a district. And I shared the outcomes, uh, specifically with the sentence that said, it's time for us to look in the mirror and that's what we would do first. That, um, uh, specifically, it was mentioned about, uh, blame of, of students, but really it's, it's truly about looking at ourselves first to see how are our students doing? Because then we would reflect on our system. Um, racism, systemic racism, isn't, uh, poking at anyone, calling them a racist. Um, it is actually, and it's not apologizing for being any race. Uh, it is actually looking and saying, you know, how are kids doing who come from many different backgrounds and we could say cultures? And, and a lot of our cultures, uh, interestingly enough, are influenced, um, uh, by our race. And, uh, those are the types of research that I've been looking into. And, and first part of it is addressing it and, and looking at it. And, and, um, uh, perhaps my letter was, 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 uh, didn't communicate, um, my intent as well as I would like. But, uh, during one of those Black Caucus meetings, um, uh, when I was listening, I heard about the college in Portland, uh, not calling for their police department anymore. And, uh, so this was about two weeks ago when I immediately just, uh, contacted our equity, senior director, as well as, um, uh, our chief of operations because, uh, he was connected to the SRO program through our safety program. And just asked, uh, I had never heard of any, uh, negative reports that I've had to deal with since I've been here for four years. And I wanted to know, were there any out there? Um, where do we stand? Um, we didn't have that information. We, we didn't have anything logged. We didn't have any, uh, incidents that we had responded to in regard to, uh, negative or inappropriate actions of SROs with students. So, uh, I then decided, well, let's see if the city has any. And, um, I just, knowing that our SROs were on vacation, students on vacation, everyone is out right now, there hadn't been, um, a message to me about SROs or a complaint. I, I actually, um, took the initiative to go, uh, talk to the chief and ask him. He did not have any in his tenure as chief. Um, but the, i- interesting enough, Deputy McCoy was the one who shared the community, um, task force with me. And, uh, sharing that there, there was an incident in Anchorage years ago in the eighties that prompted that to be started and that, uh, at the time, I'm not sure if he's still the chair, Reverend Green was involved. Um, I asked about student voice in, in, in that, in, in understanding and being able to participate, uh, to share their interactions. And, uh, not necessarily that, um, they would participate, uh, in the function of how it traditionally was. He said we could revitalize it, uh, to really add student voice and to talk about SROs as well. And so that was my intent, not having any, um, negative feedback was to engage the people who were directly, um, affected. Uh, students and staff and parents that go to our high schools and specifically middle schools. Um, I, uh, left it there and, and wanted folks to know that we would continue to look into it, uh, with that. I, with just understanding that it's a, a bigger conversation than I can have. And, and, and that wasn't, uh, well-received or, or well-communicated. Um, but to the idea of looking at our students and, and those gaps that we have seen, um, we did address this and started talking about it four years ago and the board and, uh, presented with the data, we made it public. So, uh, our dashboard shares publicly. Um, we have to know it to grow it, is, is the understanding that we have to know where we want to be and we have to know where we are to get there. Uh, the reading program was a deliberate effort to ensure equity for all, that all students have high-quality instruction in reading. Um, our reset zones in schools took a look at the discrepancy of students, uh, in different student groups who were being disciplined, uh, than others. And, um, that was a pilot, uh, so the reset zones were about, uh, the discipline. And, and those are, are working and looking to get, uh, additional funding. Uh, those work for alternative to suspension programs, if, if you weren't familiar with reset zones. Um, over the last four years, we hired our senior director of equity. We, we reestablished the EEO officer to ensure that we have someone looking at equity, uh, being able to look at, um, our, our curriculum and bias in our curriculum. Uh, in addition, um, we're looking at, uh, we're working with the equity in schools, uh, for AP courses and the college board to ensure that that high-quality look is for all and that all students' groups, um, depending on our ratios in our school are represented in, uh, those choice courses and choice programs, uh, all high-achieving. Uh, we need to shoot high for everybody. All boats, uh, need to, to, to rise there. And then, uh, in regard to hiring, we do know that we, uh, don't have, um, teachers and staff, uh, spec- specifically certificated people in front of children in our classrooms and, uh, that are, are people of color that represent. And the, the biggest discrepancy is actually in, um, Pacific Islander. Uh, our district has a, a large, um, uh, population of, um, Hawaiian Pacific Islander, and that is probably the, the least amount of certificated staff that we have. And so we established, uh, the Grow Your Own program and we look to extend that to where we encourage people and, and our own students to engage and learn about being an educator. And then we actually pay for their education through the middle college as well as a plan to pay for their last two years of college if they would come back and teach for ASD. So these are just a few of the things that we're looking at for equity. Um, we continue to interface with our community groups, uh, our special education feedback group, our ELL Indian Education Parent Advisory, as well as MECAC, uh, to learn about what we need to do to make effective change. And so I wanted to share a backdrop, um, at this point. It, um, you know, it, uh, there aren't any excuses if, if I didn't communicate well and it didn't, uh, sit well with folks, but, um, it just demonstrates that, um, probably because of the emotions, that, uh, it's something that we, we should be addressing in ASD and I'm willing to do so. Uh, so with that, uh, we will continue to look in the mirror as opposed to looking out the window, uh, and seeing what's wrong with others. We look at our systemic, um, institutionalized, uh, process and policy first. And that's what we're, we're charged to do and we're happy to do it for the children of the Anchorage School District. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I do have one hand raised in the queue. Board member Hildy.
Thank you. Well, it sounded like you're asking for feedback.
Well, it sounded like you're asking for feedback on plans for next year, so I'll say it. One of my concerns is stability for our family especially. Change is very, very hard and creates, like I slept on the hallway floor for three weeks when school closed down. Change is very hard for a lot of children in our district. So I was so pleased to hear concerns on what is going to offer the most stability for children. So I would support plans that are going to be that. I heard like one-day, two-day kind of options. Just from a parent perspective, it is very hard to manage multiple children's different schedules, which day schools have been here. And I know that is exhausting for parents on top of the stress of economic hardship and just a whole lot of other stresses that families are experiencing. And then sanitation in between. I don't know if there's any challenge if you have to sanitize more, like if kids go week on, week off, do you just have to clean the building once a week versus if it's every other day? Are you, you know, five times the amount of cleaning? So I just, minimal disruption when schools have to increase up or down. I don't want to say I, week on, week off is what I think. I trust the committee's good judgment in their process, but stability is a big one for my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hildy. And I know we are going to talk about this more under the non-action item as well. Right now, I'm not seeing any other hands raised in the queue, so we will go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. And Vice President Bellamy.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 129 Personnel Report and the regular session minutes from April 7, 2020.
Second.
I have a first and a second on the consent agenda. Just as a clarification, is that ASD memorandum number 135 for the personnel report by chance, which is what is listed on our board docs?
Okay, on my note, Katie, can you provide clarity?
Yes, that was my error in your sheet, Member Bellamy. It should be number 135. Thank you, President Michaelis.
Thank you.
Perfect. I have a first and I have a second. At this time, we will go ahead and vote. Katie, if you will, please call roll call.
Member Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
And Member Mitchell?
Yes.
The consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up, we have our action items. And just to confirm with our board secretary that there is no public testimony on action items?
That is correct. There, no one signed up for action item testimony.
Thank you. And Member Bellamy, if you would please start us off.
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve ASD memorandum 122 and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the multi-site security vestibule upgrade, Group 1, Season 1 project to SR Bales Construction Incorporated for a total award amount of $784,941.
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Are there any questions from the board members on ASD memorandum number 122? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please call, do roll call?
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
ASD memorandum number 122 passes with seven yays and zero nays. And Board Member Bellamy?
Yes.
We don't hear you. Member Bellamy, are you with us still?
Pull your mic out and plug it back in, Margot, or turn your video off.
Looks like she might have a frozen connection.
Yeah, she looks frozen.
I just texted her that she's frozen. Maybe somebody else can read it.
Andy, you are our clerk. Why don't you go ahead and, go ahead and read item number three, if you would be so willing?
Yes, I would move for the board to adopt ASD memorandum number 132, revision to school board policy 3110, transfer of funds.
And do I have a second?
Mrs. Starr, I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any board member questions on memorandum number 132? Not hearing any. Katie, if you would kindly do roll call for us, please.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
And do we have Member Bellamy back online?
I see her but don't hear her.
If you see her, can she give a thumbs up or a thumbs down? I am not seeing her video.
It is currently a dark window. I don't believe she's with us still.
Would you like me to put her not-present at vote?
Yes, for now. An ASD memorandum passes, number 132 passes with six yays, zero nays, and one not-present at vote. We do understand technical issues. Andy, if you could please read the next one for me, for the board?
Yes. Move to adopt ASD memorandum number 133, revision to school board policy 344.1, fixed assets capitalization.
And do I have a second?
Mrs. Starr, I'll second it.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum number 133?
There is Margot.
Not seeing any. Katie, if you could please do roll call.
Member Marset?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? I'll come back to her. Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Okay. Thank you. ASD memorandum number 133 passes with six yays, zero nays, and one not-present at vote.
And President Michaelis, Ms. Bellamy, or Member Bellamy just texted me and indicated that hers was a yes vote, so I'll make sure that that's changed.
Thank you.
In the minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of procedure. I would just like the record to recognize that, and go back and allow Member Bellamy to vote in any of the ones where she was electronically cut off on.
I would be okay with that. I know that technical issues are prevailing right now.
Yeah, I just don't want the record to show that she wasn't present when she actually was, yeah.
Absolutely.
Sure, so I will, if it's okay, I will go back to memorandum 133 and redo the votes. I showed that everyone was a yay and that Member Bellamy sent me a vote of yay.
Perfect. So 133 passes with seven yays and zero nays. And Andy, if you could?
There we go.
Yeah, thank you.
Move to adopt ASD memorandum 136, revisions to the 2021 school calendar.
And do I have a second, please?
Mrs. Starr, I second.
Thank you. Are there any board members that have questions on? All right, Member Donley?
Make sure I'm... Do I have the mute off? I hope you can hear me.
Yes, you're good. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I'm still an advocate that the in-service day during February of 2021 be changed to the last Friday in the month of February because that is the first day for rendezvous. And having grown up here, born and grown up here, it was one of the high points of the year that the kids all got that Friday off to be able to go to the first day of the sled dog races. And since it's only two weeks difference between the in-service day that's currently on this proposal versus going to the last Friday, that I would like to see that. So at this time, I would move that the in-service day in February be changed to the last Friday of the month of February 2021.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Mrs. Deanna Mitchell, I'll second that.
And President Michaelis, just as a point of clarification, I was reaching out to Member Bellamy, and I would, it would be helpful if that could be repeated.
Member Donley, could you please restate your amendment to item number 136?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the in-service day on the Friday in the month of February 2021 be changed to the last Friday of the month of February 2021.
Thank you. Are there, I know I've got some hands in the queue, and we are at this time speaking only to the amendment being offered by Mr. Donley. Board Member Marset, you had your hand raised first.
So I guess I'm just wondering, is there any consequences or is there any reason that shouldn't be moved?
Dr. Bishop, I see your hand now.
Thank you, Madam President. To Member Marset's question, I would like to request that Jenny Knutson be moved into the queue. I believe that she worked on the original calendar with the inclusive group of stakeholders from ASD and can share that. It has come up before. The change that we're requesting, of course, now is totally different from that, and I could speak to that. But the original calendar was made for a different reason. And is that something, Ms. that, Dr. Knutson, that you could speak to? If that, as well as I believe Dr. Kirsten Johnson also worked on the calendar committee?
Yes, through the president. We, the original calendar that we have in place now, the reason why that in-service day is scheduled for the 12th of February is related to our parent-teacher conferences. And so we have some flex time in there. We have half-days for of school and then parent-teacher conferences. And then that Friday is when we do a half-day of PD and then have the afternoon where teachers are off because of working later on the first two days for parent-teacher conferences. And I know Dr. Johnson Strumpler and Dan Barker have also been part of the calendar committee as far as how it relates to elementary and secondary and parent-teacher conferences. But that's the general gist of what the conversation was in the original calendar committee.
I do have additional information. If we did amend it to an in-service day rather than making up for that parent-teacher conference day, because the parent-teacher conference day is actually considered a school day, we would have too many in-service days. And that's in regard to the person that keeps count of the statutory requirements for our calendar just notified me of that. So we'd have to, because that one and that Friday is typically, as Dr. Knutson said, for parent-teacher conferences and a makeup for working in the evening the days before, I believe that we would not have the recommended days. This would, what they said is that changing that day would make 11 in-service days rather than 10, and one would have to be a non-in-service session day. So we would just have to take another one and change it to a session, and then we could exchange an in-service day as the motion asked.
Member Donley?
On the calendar, I thought it was indicated as an in-service day, the Friday, the 12th of February.
That is the previously scheduled in-service day. And so the changing of it, it moves that to November 3, which would be the general election day.
That we wouldn't be in school on the general election. So we had already moved that. We would need another one.
So, under the proposal that's before us, the main motion, the Friday, the 12th, the kids would be in school that day?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we'd have to find another day.
So from what I understand, at this time, your amendment is technically not doable because it would violate our minimum number of student contact days.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I hadn't counted that that day had been deleted as an in-service day because I was looking at the old calendar and not the new one. So I think you're correct. My motion would create a different problem, although I'd really like to have an in-service day on the last Friday of February. And it seems like this is a very unique situation where we're shifting it to Election Day. I'd have to reconsider what other possible in-service day we could switch.
I understand the conundrum. At this time, would you be willing to rescind your amendment as it is a not-doable one as written?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we are back to our original motion, which is the ASD memorandum number 136. And do any other board members have questions regarding the main motion as is? Mr. Donley?
Thank you. This is a question for the superintendent. If you were going to shift another in-service day to the Friday, the last Friday in February 2021, which day would have the least negative impact to switch?
That's a great question through the board president to Member Donley. I would really have to go back to the greater, the bigger team. It was very inclusive of parents and teachers, and it's all around the professional development. Specifically, that's delivered as well as you could see how this one was connected to parent-teacher conferences. So rather than... rather than off the cuff, I could bring that information back for another time if you wanted to make a calendar change. But I wouldn't, I would hate to miss something tonight, not understanding the depth of each day and how they are utilized by teachers and staff. In the, in the professional development plan for the district, I, um, yeah, and honestly, your idea, I mean, you were spot-on in just saying it's a unique year in that we already, when we had the request by our Lieutenant Governor to not have school on the 18th, we pre-looked at the next election to and made those changes. So it is quite unique. In any other given year, it would be much easier to do, as you suggested. With that, bringing it back, the purpose of this is to, this evening, I think the importance of it is to get the first day of school noticed for all to plan and for our teachers to understand that they'll have days to plan and prepare and prep. But our families really need to know publicly and for sure about the first day. And I believe there, it would be appropriate either this year or for next year to change or even bring it back and discuss the latter days later on in the year and, you know, the next meeting, if you will, with that information.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Mitchell.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand what Member Donley, I appreciate his request and I think that that is, it is a very, very big winter event. I guess I would say with all of the calendar changes, it is, it is difficult to change this. Maybe it's something we look at for a year from now versus this coming school year. And I know that the current, the calendar committee, the calendar that we most recently approved was last year's, this year's and next year's? Or is this the first year of the three-year cycle?
No, this is second, second of three-year.
Okay, so that would be changing the last year of that calendar committee. And I just don't know how complicated that is, but I, I do appreciate his request. So I just think it might be a little tight for this year.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Holloman.
And I was just gonna add that having been on the calendar committee before, everything is connected to everything and it is really difficult to change anything at this stage. I do think that probably Member Donley and other people in the public want to know that they can make suggestions that really will go into a queue and be looked at. And I'm not sure who manages that queue. The calendar committee is, in the past, has been chaired or I'm gonna say facilitated by the HR Director. It might be good to have a list and it could even be a public list on the website where people can make a suggestion and say, I'd like for the Friday before, at the start of Ferandevu to be an in-service day. And then that way it can come into play during the calendar committee, which has a lot of different representatives from a lot of different parts of the community, the different departments, the different levels in the school district, as well as parent groups and other groups throughout the community that are heavily affected by the calendar. And it might be possible, but it will only be possible through other adjustments and those adjustments have a consequence. So I don't know that we do that, but just something the Superintendent could do in her spare time.
Thank you. I have next up in the queue, Board Member Hildy.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I like the idea of the day off for Ferandevu. I just know that the calendar committee keeps in mind board goals, attendance goals, and I know that's a big time, the current days off with the conferences is a big travel time for a lot of families. They plan on that for their family vacations. So just keeping it in mind, attendance goals and maybe there's another way to do it where you can do both things. I don't know, but that's just one of the factors I know they consider, as Member Holloman said, lots of, lots of factors.
And next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I'm just having all kind of technical difficulties. But I think the only reason that we're voting on this tonight, I missed most of the discussion, but the only reason we're voting is because of the impact of COVID relative to not wanting to have our kids and staff in the building, you know, because they use our buildings for voting, correct? So we would not be having, this wouldn't even be an item, I think, if it hadn't been for that. And I just ditto what Andy said. I do, I also think going forward, and I also ditto what Deana said regarding the amendment to, the failed amendment, because if that's important to people, then the committee should know that. And, but I don't know that we need to, that we'll be able to beyond manipulate the beginning of the year without dominoing something else throughout the year. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. And Dr. Bishop, I see your hand raised.
Madam President, I do want to share that if the Board wanted to take an innovative step and going out on a limb here, we do understand after this last year that learning can be done at home. And that day could be designated as an at-home learning day, online learning day, if the Board so desired to be out of the box. And I know from conversations I've had with the Commissioner, even given that the movement that we've done with the in-surfaces does create, we used to keep 172 days in our year so that we'd have two flex days for snow and not have to make up, because that, you know, is additional hit on our budget, that I already have permission that any snow days, we can call learning days from home because we, our students are going to be one-to-one, we are training staff, we're having a blended learning model, that really, if we wanted to problem solve, we could say that date is an online learning day, school day, because you can do it anytime, anyplace, anywhere.
Or Member Donley, you have your hand raised? Although you might still be on mute, though.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. I would move that if the district can get permission from the Department of Education, that the last Friday in February can be designated a remote learning day, that we allow that, that we designate it so on the calendar.
Is there a second to Member Donley's amendment?
I'll second it. This is Star.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment offered by Member Donley? Board Member Hildy?
Um, I really like the idea. I think it's a cool solution. I am concerned, one, when we get into the spring and one, I don't know if we're even gonna have school every day. Like, who knows what the schedule's gonna be happening then, or if they'll even be for Ferandevu, if we can be in a group, I don't know. But you get to like these real short week after short week after short week, and then it's like April and May never end. And it's this really long, like, all of you parents know, it's this really, so that's kind of just one hesitation of mine. One, will there even be for Ferandevu? And two, like, is this where, if we're gonna have one day, is this where we, like, the optimal place for it? But I really like the idea of it and I like Ferandevu.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Holloman.
Um, my biggest concern is a real core part of what we do in our school district is teach kids the meaning of words and if they matter. And while I like the idea of kids being out for Ferandevu, I think we need to add a day onto the end of the year. We're supposed to have them in class a certain amount of time. My biggest problem is calling it an at-home, at-home morning opportunity, but kind of giving a wink and a nod and going, but really, we know you're gonna go to Ferandevu. Um, I, I think it's a horrible example. If we want to let them have that day off to be at Ferandevu, which I'm in favor of, we need to find another day to be in school to meet our obligation and not, not offer an at-home morning day when we don't really expect them to be at-home morning. I'm gonna vote against it just on the definition of words. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Bellamy?
I have a question for the Superintendent. Dr. Bishop, can we, so instead of a day, we don't call it that. At the university level, we call it asynchronous learning or an asynchronous class. Does that count against us as a day? Or does it, or can we just designate asynchronous classes if we are, you know, throughout the year if we needed to?
Through the President to Member Bellamy, that's what I tried to explain, that with our days off, that can, learning can continue. And what we found out this time is that throughout the day, there are students that don't get on our system and they don't get it on until 10 o'clock at night during the spring. So I wasn't doing a, you know, trying to be sly in my suggestion. What I'm saying is that there's many more possibilities than what we used to do. And asynchronous learning, continuation of learning does happen outside the classroom, specifically when we have the tools to do so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Hildy raised a possible concern with the scheduling where some people take advantage with the timing of spring break. But next year, spring break doesn't happen till after Iditarod weekend. So that timing is not a problem for those families this coming year in 2021.
Board Member Hildy?
Um, I, I mean, I think this is a, I disagree that it's like a wink and a nod. Like, I can teach my kids in the morning and help them and then we can go to Ferandevu. So that's not a missed day of school for me. We can do both. I think Ferandevu is wildly educational. That's why I take my kids. It's fun and it's lots of puppies. But I also think this is like a fun way to kind of take a step, you know, forward in what we're doing and how we engage with students and parents and teachers and try new things. And so I'm kind of intrigued and it's one day, we can see how it goes. Um, I guess it doesn't, I don't know, I think, I think it could be a cool thing for people to get a chance to say, we value Alaska history and, I don't know, our community. But I don't know how to work out because we're in the middle of a pandemic. That doesn't mean we can't try new things.
Uh, Board Member Bellamy?
I'm not sure of the process, but could we, instead of just the online learning day, since we're talking about language as an asynchronous, because that's the correct term, is that correct, Dr. Bishop? It, I, I'm just trying to figure out, how does the, how does the Department of Ed refer to sessions that, learning that takes place, um, other than face-to-face?
Through the President to Member Bellamy, they really haven't yet. It's just through discussions and the flexibility that they're offering, understanding that we could stand up viable systems and for learning and engagement. And so I will suggest asynchronous to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have an amendment to memorandum number 136. It is, the amendment reads, I, Member Donley, I move with approval from DED that the last Friday in February be designated an online learning day. And so at this time, seeing no other board members' comments, I'm going to ask Katie to please call roll call on the amendment only.
President Michaelis?
No.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And then, um, Member Hildy and Member Holloman, I see and appreciate that you voted online. I believe that when we're doing a remote meeting, I am kind of required to do a roll call, so I'll go ahead and ask you to confirm your votes. Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
No.
Thank you.
That amendment passes with five yays and two nays, which brings us back to our main motion, which is the revision to the 2021, 2020 to 2021 school calendar as amended. Are there any board member comments on the main motion as amended? Seeing that, Katie, if you could please do roll call for us.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes. Thank you. At this time, ASD memorandum number 136 passes with seven yays and zero nays as amended. Next up, Board Member Bellamy, if you could read the motion for ASD memorandum number 137.
Yes, um, Madam President, I move, I move to approve ASD memorandum 137, the attached letter in response to recent events of racial injustice and inequity as a statement from the Anchorage School Board.
Do you have it? Thank you. Are there any board member questions on ASD memorandum number 137? Not seeing any. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
And Member Mitchell?
Yes.
An ASD memorandum number 137 passes with seven yays and zero nays. That brings us to the end of our action items. Next up is our non-action and the only item on it, which I will go ahead and pull because I know there will be discussion and presentation, is the ASD School Start 2021 Task Force. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop and her team.
Thank you, Madam President and School Board. As I stated during the Superintendent update, we just went through a plethora of ideas and examples studying from other countries who have sent students back to school, their successes, their failures, their challenges. And the team wants to share some of those ideas with you in order to move forward. Again, at the end of this, we, it is for you to receive the information, but also to, in some kind of straw poll, say, yes, looks like you're moving in the right direction. And we do encourage the type of feedback that we received during the Superintendent report in regard to the structure and the stability of the program. So understanding bigger needs, that's what we're meeting, I believe, tomorrow with the community group. Tom Roth will talk about that. But we'd like to share with you before this goes out to greater feedback audiences. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chairs of each of the committees, starting with Mark Stock for the focus group. Again, as a review, and we always will keep this online for anyone who accesses this on the internet, or our website, rather, that there is a planning document to understand the strategy with this that is tied to the state of Alaska. With that, Dr. Stock, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and to members of the Board and community. So the School Start Task Force, as Dr. Bishop has said, has been meeting. And I would like to kind of explain a little bit of our process. So many of those models that we had looked at in senior leadership, there was a smaller executive leadership team of our academic service folks who've looked at a wide variety of options, everything from week on, week off, multiple day models, AM PM, all kinds of different ways that schools are trying to envision this work. And then we called that down to about four medium-risk options. Those were the ones that Those were the ones that went to the School Start Task Force. And then we have since then have called that down to two ideas. And that internal planning group consists of about 36 folks total. There were members of various groups there. We've had four meetings. We reviewed the state's low, medium, and high risk scenarios, and then we focused in on the medium risk piece. And there are two areas that are really important tonight. And the straw poll kind of a thing, thumbs up, thumbs down from you all, is really only needed tonight on one of them. And that is just, as I explained, the curriculum and instruction model, what we're calling the cohort quarter model. It's important for us to make sure that you're okay with that part because the working teams starting tomorrow are off and running on trying to organize curriculum. So we want to make sure that, that it still meets your need. The scheduling pieces where a lot of the talk in the, I think the debate will come in is starting around the, the notion of how much face-to-face contact can we do? And what's the health conditions at the time school starts? And so there will be ongoing discussions throughout the summer as these health conditions are regularly monitored. We don't intend to bring you a detailed plan until mid-July, at which point we're getting closer to being able to say this is, this is the model. So we will bring those back to you in July. Next slide. So I want to start with this concept because this is the critical part for tonight. What is a cohort quarter model? This is our term. Can't find it in the literature. It's just something we coined. It's two things. One, elementary cohorts of students and staff are self-contained in a medium risk level wherever possible. And think of it as the old school self-contained or one-room schoolhouse or one-grade level, if you will, where students are, are tried to be restricted as far as their travel. In this cohort model in an elementary, the specialists become somewhat more of a generalist and they are assigned to cohort teams so that they don't travel every single day. In a normal school, you'll see classes going into art, music, and PE all day long. And the travel in the school is extraordinary. And in a cohort model, we're trying to limit that due to COVID so that the risk of exposure or a risk of someone catching COVID, if there was someone positive, is reduced greatly. So in this model, our specialists are moved to various grade levels at designated times. So they might spend, an art teacher might work with kindergarten for a number of weeks. And then if everything is going well, then could transfer to it and work with another group of students. And the goal is to reduce the time that they travel. So that's the elementary piece of a cohort model. The quarter model in the elementary is based around trying to spread those specials throughout the year with the people assigned to the teams so that the kids are getting multiple experiences in art, music, and PE spread throughout the school year. But it can't be done on a day-to-day basis. It's done in chunks of time to stop spread. At the middle school and high school, our courses and subjects are taught in, in blocks of nine weeks. And in this scenario, students would take two 90-minute classes. They would focus on ELA, math, science, and social studies. So nine weeks, one, they would take, say, an ELA in a science class, English, Language Arts, and Science. Second nine weeks, they would take a math class in Social Studies. And every one of those times, they would take two 45-minute electives. What this does is it's sort of like the elementary cohort model in that it reduces the amount of travel greatly. The other thing it does is it reduces the number of courses at the secondary level for which students and teachers are responsible. This was the big complaint about the spring. When kids were trying in the high school to take six classes online or in the middle school, multiple classes online, it became tough to manage. So the cohort quarter concept is simply trying to reduce the amount of travel and reduce the amount of subjects students take at one time. Next slide. So why? So the big question is why? The, the issues of trying to be consistent and meet student needs. So some countries called it the bubble model. That was a term that you'll find. We just use the word cohort, but what it does is there's less passing periods, less travel of the students and staff, more self-containment. Schools will have to develop some unique pieces to their schedules based on the number of specialists they have available to help assign to different teams. In elementary, the face-to-face time will be spent priority on English, Language Arts, and Math. And one of the caveats to this is we would have to have a slightly shorter student day during those blocks of time. And the reason is that in order to meet the contract requirements for teachers' preparation time, that depends on specialists. And if students aren't leaving every day going to a special, then teachers' prep time is affected. So in this model, teachers will get all their prep time after the students have left for the day. So they would have extra time there. In the, I'm sorry, keep, go back. I was just turning off my mic to cough there. Sorry. So in the quarter nine-week blocks, it reduces the number of courses that they're responsible for. And like I mentioned before, it was a major concern. This was probably the criticism from the spring. So anything we can do in an online or blended environment that will help our students be successful, this is probably the one big key for us. And the reason we want to come to you tonight and kind of give us the thumbs up on the cohort piece is because we got to start designing the content and then we know what subjects to do first and so on. Next slide. So this one is probably where there's going to be some discussion because this, there are, if there's 20 people in a room, you have 20 opinions on this. If you put 50 in a room, you have 50 opinions. So it just doesn't matter. But what I'll, like, all I can tell you is the level of conversations we had to get to this point. So what we did was we tried to create something, as, as I think it was Member Hildy mentioned, about consistency for families. One thing about what we're proposing is that it's, it's scalable so that it doesn't, it can go up or down a little bit. So in a low-risk level environment, based on the state's definition, all our students would go to school, five days a week, full student days. We would only cancel if, I mean, we would only, if there was an e-learning day, it would only be because school was canceled, maybe a snow day or maybe a Ferandee day or something, you know? You never know. But those, e-learning would be the only time where that would apply. Switch over to high risk on the red, the red code there. And the red box is who goes in a high-risk environment? No one. They're all online in a blended format, like happened this spring with a couple of huge exceptions. One of them is that we're going to have more rigorous and more aligned curriculum and content. We're going to have a robust opportunity for our elementary students. We're going to have a lot of changes to what happened in the spring. But the concept is in a high-risk environment, our students are, are in an online off, out of the brick and mortar altogether. As far as how many days do they do this and how long are they in a day? That's not necessarily applicable because it's like Dr. Bishop said, anytime, anyplace, anyday, they can be learning. So in this high-risk environment, that's not really an issue. All the days are learning days. So then let's talk about the medium risk because this is where there's lots of opinions. If we started in a, in, in a cautious approach, what you would do is you would assign all the students into an alphabet-based cohort and you would have half of the students coming two days a week. So you might have, and then the families, of course, would have different names and last names. They'll have to all get it worked out so the families can be together, as, as one board member mentioned. So the concept here is that they would go two days a week, five hours a day, and they would stay with their alphabet-based cohort through this time period. Wednesdays would be e-learning days and professional development. Part of that is because of the blended and online components. Teachers need time to work on those other online areas and, and put some content there. And even, no matter what we build this summer, teachers are still going to have options and they're going to have some flexibility in the blended platforms. And so everything isn't provided for them in a blended environment. They still have, you know, much they can do. They also have to kind of check in and monitor some of the work that students are doing. So what the concept would be is if we chose to start cautiously, you would begin the year with a preset schedule like this one in what we would call the medium-high-risk environment. And if things go well, then the thought would be you could move to medium-low risk, which is you could go from 50% cohort to all the students coming in. Still have to be a shortened day. Teachers would still need that preparation period. Wednesdays would still be e-learning and PD days. So tho, those are the concepts and these are scalable. They're fairly simple. They're fairly easy to understand. And we think that, now, I will say this, there's still conversation. Is this, you know, optimistic or aggressive or is this cautious? I think it depends on your point of view. We have some folks who, who legitimately believe that, that that's too, too, too much face-to-face right off the bat. And some want to ease in and see how it goes. But this is the model that we're, we're considering. Community input tomorrow with the larger community group will go through and you'll, they'll get the chance to hear not only what, what we presented, but also what your conversations are tonight. And the community also will have a, a large group weighing in with Mr. Roth's team tomorrow. So I'll stop with that. That's the, the model that we've called this, all this work down to. And, and then really, we just have to wait and see how the summer goes with regards to COVID.
Thank you. Are you taking questions at this time or moving on to a different presenter?
Well, I could maybe refer to you and/or to Dr. Bishop if they would rather go through the rest of them and then do questions for everyone or whether they want to do them piece by piece.
Um, that's a great thing. Let's go ahead and go through them and then, because maybe some of the questions might be answered by other groups.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to, I did have a summary slide there. I forgot about that. We'll work through the details, bring you the schedules in July. And the work, the thumbs up piece, when we're all done with all the reports, is just to see if, if the board has any heartburn over the concept of a cohort or the quarter system concept because that, our design team's got to get to work and start looking at the courses and scheduling and they can start planning. Whether it's one day a week, two days a week, four days a week, all that's another issue, but just to get the design work done. So, and now we'll go to Dr. Knutson.
Thank you, Dr. Stock, and good evening. Today, I'm going to quickly give you an update on the working groups. And I appreciate Dr. Stock's presentation before this because a lot of the work that our curriculum working groups are doing is dependent on the cohort quarter decision as we move forward. So just to refresh your memory, the purpose of our working groups is really to support the successful implementation of teaching and learning so we can really easy, easily and smoothly pivot between our low, medium, and high-risk situations as we move through the year as needed. So our timeline has been, as you recall, in May, we adopted a district-wide digital platform for blended and online classes. And that is Canvas so that we have some consistency because we know consistency and some predictability will help us in, in times like this where there is some uncertainty. And so as much predictability as we can have, we want to have for families so that they can get used to things and know how to navigate between these new systems, as well as our teaching staff as well, so that they can have familiarity and navigate between a consistent system. So that was, that was chosen in May. Since the end of May, we have worked on establishing priorities, working teams, digital workflows, and course design parameters. And, and that's really what's happening right now. And a lot of the work that's going to happen with the working groups in July and August is really dependent on if we go to quarter, a quarter system because then we prioritize certain courses at that point in time at secondary. We're going to, how we construct the classes and work with those teams will look different than if we were doing our traditional model. And the same thing for elementary with cohorts. How we organize the content and be able to put it out to folks is going to look different in a cohort model than in a traditional model. So that information's really going to inform the work of our working teams. Then July and August, we're going to be developing those courses and the training for both teachers, students, and families because that is one of the pieces of feedback we had was if we go to straight online, especially with elementary, our caregivers and families are, you know, helping especially our little ones access some of this content online. So we want to make sure we keep that in mind as we're planning for professional development. And then finally, the feedback loop that we're setting up is there's a project leadership team. And this is senior leadership who's really decision-making, you know, clearing the pathway for our working groups to do, be able to do their work and making decisions as needed. They cascade that up when they need some support. And big, big part of all of this is our content leads. These are curriculum coordinators, our directors in teaching, learning, special ed, ELL, Indian ed, all of those areas so that they can really help lead the working groups through the work, through all the courses and everything that needs to be put on Canvas. So they're a critical piece and they have been working very hard in June to, to do that work. And then our working groups, our teachers and our staff and practitioners in the schools who are going to help us put the courses together. And again, really using, using our district curriculum, but really looking at how we provide a rigorous, guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students as they move forward into, into the school year. And then finally, we have an advisory team that is going to meet a couple of times this summer. And the purpose of the advisory group for the curriculum area and instruction is really, it's made up of practitioners from the schools, teachers, librarians, counselors, all of those kind of folks. And it's to present what we're doing and for them to share back considerations that the work group should be thinking about as they're doing the work. So one example I want to give you when we met the first time for the online platform is a consideration that the team rose up to us was that a Canvas platform has to look very different for K-2 than it does for even the upper grades in elementary, middle, and high. And so how are we going to look at that very intentionally to make it fit with the learning, teaching, and learning needs at that level? So that's in examples. They would raise those considerations to us so we can really think about that as the working groups are doing that. And that's going to be co-led by Corey Ace, the incoming AEA president, and myself. And people will be kind of like in our board meeting, allowed to come and observe and hear what's happening. But we want it to be really practitioner-based so that we can hear, hear those considerations from people who are going to be doing this in the schools. And so that's the structure of what we're doing and we're stand ready to move forward. As we know, some, some of those key things tonight that Dr. Stock presented, we'll be able to move forward and continue that work. So that concludes my report and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tom Roth.
Thank you, Dr. Knutson, through the board president. So this evening, I'd like to provide a brief update on the community advisory group. Some, some quick details, 20 members, the first meeting, first session is tomorrow. The second session is scheduled for the 24th of June. In, in addition to the 20 community participants, there will also be district staff who are, who are logged into the meeting as non-participants. They're prepared to answer questions as subject matter experts were, were, or if there are questions that, that need to be answered. So what I'd like to briefly talk about is the agenda for tomorrow. Quickly talk through, through the purpose and, and some of the methods for the community advisory group. And then, then address several, several questions that have been presented to panel members to, to facilitate their contribution to the discussion tomorrow and on the 24th. So first, the, the agenda, there are really five primary segments or components of, of tomorrow's meetings. After, after administrative notes and introductions, what, what we're focused on really is, is to en, ensure that all, all members understand a number of, of different informations that, that are, you know, key to the, the decisions for, for August. So it's tomorrow, I anticipate it's going to be very heavy in the delivery of information. So the first is to review the state guidance, the state's Smart Start 2020 in, in detail, really kind of along the lines of the, the low, medium, and high-risk criteria and guidelines that they have provided to, to all districts in the state. From that, we're going to transition into a review of the options for low, medium, and high risk. The topic that Dr. Stock presented to the board this evening is, is what, you know, Dr. Stock will be presenting to the panel members. For both these, for all these sessions, you know, that we're going to build in question and answer time to make sure that any, anything that's unclear can be addressed to ensure that there is clarity. From that, Dr. Knutson's going to review. From that, Dr. Knutson's going to review the, the curriculum planning, again, the thinking as, as we understand it now. Uh, and then we'll transition into a discussion of some other contributing factors for the panel members to understand. Uh, you know, what other things are, are contributing to this plan and, and, and how the district will support? You know, examples of that, uh, would include things such as transportation, nutrition, uh, distribution of computers, uh, students with special needs, how, how we are looking to address those additional factors in the planning. Once, once we've gone through the information, we'll then transition into, uh, discussions, focus discussions, uh, from the group. We, we believe and, and Dr. Stock did, did address the, the, the most likely scenario that we're going to find ourselves in is in the medium risk. So we anticipate spending a majority of the, the discussion time looking at, uh, and talking about the medium risk options. So real quick, from that transitioning to a discussion of purpose and, and, and methods. So the, we, we think the fundamental purpose of the community advisory group really is to educate district leaders and planners in the school start task force. And, uh, by, uh, their provision of candid and informed analysis, observations, uh, and the presumed impacts, uh, with the resumption of school in either a low, medium or high risk environment. Um, our method, uh, to achieve this is one to, again, to provide information and ensure that there is clarity and understanding of, of the environment, the conditions of the state. And then understanding the, the options, uh, that the district is considering. It will be clear that, that this is not decisional. But, but we want to make sure that we're able to provide enough information. Uh, so again, members have understanding. So from that knowledge, we look for the advisory group members to provide their analysis, observations and the presumed, presumed impacts based on some guiding questions, which we'll cover here momentarily. So that's the primary method. The, the second, uh, is from the members to receive input from, I'll call their constituencies. Uh, and, and that can be their individuals or groups depending on, um, the members on the panel. And then in the second session that they will relay the same, the, the input that they receive from their constituents, um, we'll can convey and discuss on the second session on the 24th of June. So to real quick, quickly discuss the, the questions that have been presented to the panel members. Again, this is intended really as a tool to, to help shape, uh, their thinking and their thoughts going into, uh, tomorrow. So the first question that was presented is how will a low, medium risk option impact or affect your respective constituency? That's question one. Question two, how will a low, medium or high risk option impact or affect you and your family? So there's a personal component to it. The third question is how will a low, medium or high risk option impact Anchorage life? So understanding their belief or presumed effect of a low, medium or high risk option on the city. And then lastly, we, we know we've got a lot of very informed, capable and competent professionals that are working on this very complex matter. But we're not, we're not presumptive to believe we know everything. So the last question is, you know, what are we not considering? What are we not thinking about that could affect you or your respective communities? Again, we, we, we're hoping that, that these members will all participate and help us think through, uh, again, this very, very complex matter. So that's a quick summary where we are. Uh, we're starting tomorrow morning at, at 10:30. Uh, the first meeting is a, a two-hour block and, uh, we look forward to it. So at this time, that's my update. I think I'll, uh, open it up back to, uh, Dr. Bishop, Dr. Stock, um, for board member, uh, questions and comments.
All right. And I, I would like to add as well, there's another, um, uh, standing committee that's running alongside of this, uh, and it's steered by, um, uh, Mike Fleckenstein and Kathy Moffett in regard to, uh, K-12 virtual school that's ASD connected to our schools. So that option will also be available if parents just don't want a blended model in and out, that we want to give them a connection to their school and a robust program, uh, utilizing, um, courses from Apex, Florida Virtual, just different, uh, vendors of, of, uh, resources, uh, with a individualized plan. So that's another, uh, uh, topic that we will present. Uh, but that's, uh, that group is running alongside this SMART START, uh, for, um, our blended learning. So wanted to, to share that option will be available to parents and we'd like to keep them connected to ASD. Uh, and in the future we'll, we'll update you. Uh, but with that, uh, this is, um, what we have. And we're, we're welcome for your feedback, uh, as we move forward. Again, uh, we just, we totally understand the complexities, totally understand that not all questions are answered. Uh, but at this time it, it would benefit us as well as you heard the planning teams, uh, to, to, to know that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And if board members can use the raised hand feature if they have questions and comments, and certainly the opportunity to weigh in as they are kind of looking for, uh, as kind of a straw poll, uh, vote from board members. And the first one I do have up in the queue is board member Hildy.
Thank you. So thank you so much for this presentation as a mom who is, uh, trying not to panic for the fall, trying to be cool. This, uh, I feel much calmer seeing, uh, all this excellent work that's done. So, uh, I just had a few questions. One, I want to say that those community groups sound terrific. We just talked about surveys giving limited perspective. So I, I love that it's already being addressed and going out to people to getting feedback. Um, I did have that question about the sanitizing costs and schedule for the various considerations. If it's week on, week off, is that easier to clean? Or does it not really make a difference? Um, as far as the, the cohort, my only concern is on math. I, I see how it could work for the other subjects. I am concerned about students having a break in math. Being able to meet their academic, uh, goals, you know, continuous learning. And then my last question is what risk level would you say we're at today? Just for a perspective, parents understanding what the school year might start at, might look at, um, to be able to start planning for, you know, their childcare and things like that.
I'll, I'll take the, the last question and, uh, Mark can share. Uh, I would say that our community is in medium, high risk right now. Given the parameters that Deed has shared.
And, uh, through the president to member Hildy is the question about math is interesting because it's also the same question that music teachers ask. Folks who like to be in subjects and courses that need repetition, they need daily work. The scope and sequence is really critical. I mean, I would put our elementary reading in that same category as well. I mean, the, the issue is you need as much as you can get. Um, the quarter system, the, what I'm going to say though, is that I know math teachers say that, but there are thousands of math teachers in this, in this, uh, country that are teaching in trimester schedules right now that have the same issues. And so it is definitely something that can be worked through. There are other ways you can do it. You can schedule in things like math tutoring sessions on one of those elective slots. There are ways to carry that forward in your off, uh, you know, on their off, uh, quarter. And I don't know if, if, if Dr. Johnson would like to chime in if there, or if that answers your question in, in enough detail. But it is a concern and it will be a concern of math teachers, but it is happening all over the country right now. And there are ways to work through that.
So. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kirsten.
I was just going to say, um, Dr. Stock alluded to it, but, um, there are ways for us to carry forward, um, especially for our struggling math students, um, a, a particular elective where they could get that routine practice so that they don't regress, um, and, and continue their skills. Um, and so we could definitely address, um, that, that piece when they don't have a math class scheduled for that particular quarter.
So through, through the president, if I might just very quickly respond to, um, member Hildy's question concerning cost of cleaning and, and disinfection. So if, if I might, not, not so much focused on cost, but just to, just to, to address a couple of things. First, uh, day, daily cleaning, uh, will, will go on, um, as, as we, we have always done in schools. Uh, and, and to some extent that, that cleaning also involves disinfection of, of fixture and fixtures and other high contact items. And that's inclusive of, of school buses and buildings. We, we, we have procured, uh, but are waiting to take receipt of a number of electrostatic sprayers. And those are the devices that allow us to do a very quick disinfection of schools. So if, if we have those systems on hand at the start of the school year, then, then it's absolutely feasible that we could also not just clean, but do a complete disinfection of all school buildings on a daily basis. Now, if we don't, and, and I think folks understand that we, we are competing for resources like everybody else. Uh, we, we think we're going to get them, but you know, I'm not going to count my chickens until I have them. So if, if we do have to do a, a hand disinfection of schools, uh, on a single day, that, that is not feasible. But, uh, it, it probably is not necessary either. Uh, what is important, if we do have any, any outbreaks, that we can respond locally in an immediate way to address those circumstances. And that is absolutely, um, feasible and planned. I, I will say that, that as far as a, a continuing need inside of classrooms, I, I think any way you look at it, there will be a demand on teachers in classrooms to, to maintain some level of cleaning and disinfecting during the school day, particularly I think in the elementary schools. And we are looking to provide resources to teachers to enable them to do that. So, and that's my bit on cleaning.
And, and to add to that, uh, um, through the president, we, we, uh, to, to member Hildy, we do have schools that eat lunch in their classrooms and have those set protocols with, with safe cleaning materials. And, and, uh, really kids take responsibility for that. And, and given probably the, the information about this, it's going to be a, a good, uh, teaching tool routines as well to ensure, um, all those safe practices of social distancing, covering coughs, wearing masks, cleaning are all going to be a part of our lives for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have board member Bellamy.
Oh, I actually my math, I had a question about the math as well. Uh, that's been answered pretty good to my satisfaction. My other question has to do with, does the, the plan, this plan covers pre-K through 12, correct? All, every, all kids, all grades?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have board member Marseth.
So I guess my question is what does a day back at school look like? I mean, um, are they going to be six feet apart? I mean, what, what does it look like? And how do we know where to start? Given that most of our students haven't, um, especially our elementary students probably haven't advanced and maybe lost something.
So, uh, uh, through the president, to, to member Marseth. So one of the things that we'll be working through is every single division in operations and in food service, they've already begun planning. And once we, uh, you know, get settled on, on these sort of range of options, operations has already started well into that. So the answer to that, some of it, it depends. And so for example, the, the things that are coming out of the state are, are guidelines. They are not laws, statutes or rules. So we have to work through, they all understand that we have certain things that are going to be flexible. If you've attended a elementary school, you're pretty sure that if you have all the students in there maintaining six feet of space is virtually impossible in a six foot of, of virtual environment. I mean, I think we have to acknowledge that part of it. That's very challenging. I'm not saying it can't be done at parts of the school, but it's very difficult. And, um, but if you look at an alphabet-based cohort model of 50% and you have half, you get a lot closer. And with the right kind of precautions and with masks and with all the other things that we put in place with as much less travel as we can get, we've done the things that we can do with the schedule and the system. And then we have to lay in all the PPE and all the health considerations. And it won't look like school's going to look different when students are in there. And, um, we'll work with our health department and work through all of those. There will be protocols that'll have to be taught. Um, so I mean, it's, it's certainly a guideline. It's something we will try to aspire to. But for example, low risk and medium risk, there's, they're very challenging to, to do transportation with one student per seat, every other seat. You couldn't deliver all the students to the school, given that kind of spacing on a school bus. So we will have to work through things like PPE and other things, or looking at the medium, high risk environment where you're cutting half of the students in, on the bus by just virtue of an alphabet-based cohort. So we still have lots of work to do on some of those details, but that's the kind of environment the whole country's facing right now.
So just a quick follow-up, are, are we saying that our students will wear masks? Or no? Or do we not know that yet?
Well, yeah, we're in a continuum.
Well, it's interesting because the state's guidelines have not, uh, used the word masks in the actual guidelines. Um, but when you asked Dr. Zink, when I pitched the question to her in the chat box and the SMART START webinar, Dr. Zink for the state indicated the great benefits of masks and went into great detail. And so even though they don't mention it, those are guidelines that we ourselves can implement. And we are, we are looking into those details and buying the purchases, doing the things we need to do to be prepared to do that.
Thank you. Next up I have, uh, board member Hildy.
Thank you. I just, um, had one more question about computers. We talked about one-to-one ratio for third through 12, getting computers to all the kids. But what, how will the kid through second do online learning with computer? You know, how does that work if they don't have one-to-one?
So, um, I'll, I'll handle the first part and then we can refer to, to, to Mike if we need to. So the, the fact that at the, uh, K through two levels, um, the students who need those in a blended environment will have them one-to-one means that every kid has purchased their own. That doesn't mean that, that, that we won't be able to get kids K through two, some of those. But we have other options. So we use the paper packets. We use the other combinations of things that, that come into play. We have multiple, if we have students coming in two days a week or four days a week, there's much that can be done to provide students with hard copies of things in those lower grades. So we'll have to do a combination of all of those things.
Thank you. Do any other board members have, um, questions or comments at this juncture? Board member Mitchell?
Yeah, I just, I, I think the options that you've explored are all very interesting. And I think that the, um, for the secondary levels, I really liked that idea of the cohort, quarter, um, option. So, you know, the biggest concern for everybody, I'm sure, is if we do have to go to a couple of days a week or no days a week, it makes it really difficult for parents and childcare and work. And that's just, I think the way it is, I don't know if there's any, um, is there anything we can do around that in terms of, um? I mean, I guess if we go to that, it's because we can't have more people in the building at a time. So there probably isn't much we can do to help in that regard, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Uh, Dr. Bishop?
And, and that just, uh, reminded me that there would be certain student populations that may be already self-contained, uh, that could be brought in every day. Um, I don't think this answers your question, um, member Mitchell, but it, uh, brought me to a, a additional thought on other students with high needs. Uh, they may, uh, already have a self-contained classroom and, and already have a space on their busing. So, uh, we will take a look at individual IEPs. So, uh, what we're looking at are really for, um, the general education, larger groups. And, um, you were correct in, in stating that a lot of those possibilities to support childcare and other things are, are, aren't possible because of the same reasons why we wouldn't have them in school. We, we would work for partners with that, uh, given staff. We would work for partners with that, given staff similar to how we are now, but even that is very limited due to the daycare and day camp precautions that they have.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands in the queue. I'm going to go ahead and ask a couple of mine. I don't know if it is too early at this point, but, and I know that there have been different discussions on using hard numbers versus a percentages. Do we have definitions for what low risk versus medium, low, medium, high and high risk is at this point?
Yes, Madam President, the Smart Start actually has done that, I believe, in last meeting, that it was hot off the press right after last meeting, and we sent it out. It's about a 10-page document. We can resend that to the board this week in the Board Connect. It's also on the state website. So they very distinctly defined those and really low risk is zero cases for 14 days. The same is true for the activities. And that's why we're making a push, not only with the activities, but also with this, to really broaden that definition of low risk to allow some more flexibility, given communities like Anchorage that have, are a hub and that possibly the virus will be here anyway. But if it's one or two cases and 350,000 people, that's very different than one or two cases and 100 people. And so to your message about percentages, we continue to provide feedback to Dr. Zink as well as to Commissioner Crum and Commissioner Johnson in regard to strategies to communicate this. And they're open to those discussions because they want that boots on the ground feedback from people who are actually living in those communities. Again, Dr. Stock stated that these are guidelines. They're not statute, they're not policy, they're not regulation even. They're guidelines. So we do have some flexibility given to us, but we have to really wrap our heads around safety and best practices with that flexibility as well.
Yeah. And while I think I know the answer to my next question, I want to go ahead and just ask it for clarification. Looking at the chart that is on our screen right now, is this, say, a category description that will be applied to the district as a whole? Or will individual schools shift between green, yellow and red?
You want me to tackle that one? Or you jump in? So the answer to that is probably yes, as far as, but we'll have to wait and see how things, things go. When we, when we ask the commissioner, you know, how does the state define the word community? Like, when you're talking about, you know, a village, you know, you think of a community, when you think of Anchorage, what does a community, if there's one COVID case in this city, and does that automatically mean that we're low risk? In that definition, if you take that strictly, it's hard to imagine a low risk anywhere during the year here in the next near future. So we could, we will have that as an internal option to be able to have some schools in face to faces, some not. But we haven't worked through how those details are going to work. We'll have a decision-making screen and a team that would pull in that data and make those decisions if it gets to that. But we could, that is an option, yes.
Thank you. That answers my questions for right now. Do any other board members have any other questions or comments? All right, so I'm not seeing any hands raised in the queue. And the administration has asked us for some straw poll type guidance on whether they should continue with this cohort quarter, you know, model, you know, in, to help guide their work, you know, over the next little bit. So I am going to ask each board member to weigh in on, you know, their support or not support. You know, either way, just so that they have an idea of what we're looking at as a board going forward. And so I'm just going to go kind of down my list over here on participants in no particular order. Board Member Marsette?
Yes.
Board Member Hildy?
Yes.
Board Member Holloman?
Yes, I support it.
Board Member Mitchell?
Yes, I support it.
If you said something.
That would be yes.
Okay, thank you. And Board Member Donley?
Yes.
Okay, and myself, I too am also a yes as well. Dr. Bishop, did that adequately give you the guidance you're looking for?
Madam President, yes, and we will continue to update the board, keep you informed. Tomorrow will be a big day. We will share with the community group, as well as the members of the board that are on the community group, can weigh in about this discussion and add that detail as the experts from boards and in school districts. And we just look forward to engaging more and more people in the process. You know, it's just scary not having answers, but it's work that by the end, we will have contingencies worked out and hopefully that our communities, kids, employees, families, feel that we're going in with the best knowledge we have and putting our best foot forward.
Thank you. You know, I kind of liken this to the, how do you eat an elephant? Is one bite at a time, and we have to start somewhere. And so appreciative that we're starting with this, you know, first one bite on how to tackle this, you know, right now. And we'll continue to get guidance and continue to make decisions as a community going forward. So thank you very, very much for all the work that you guys have put in so far. And we do look forward to, you know, updates as it progresses. Next up on the agenda is public testimony. We had three people that testified earlier, and we did not max out that time, so I'm not aware of any others at this time, which brings us to school board and administration comments. And I have a few hands in the queue. We'll start with Board Member Marsette, please.
So the comment I want to make is, you know, we are looking at equity and a lot of this that comes to the forefront with what's happened in the nation is our African American, our boys of color and that sort of thing. But when you look at our school suspension statistics, and I've gone through them quite intensively, in our elementary schools, our number one student that is expelled more than anyone else is students with disabilities. And it's not that to put it light or to take away from our other students, but I hope that when we look at the inequity of our students, that we focus, of course, on our boys of color because their suspension rates are higher, not always in all cases, our Hawaiian Pacificers and are definitely sometimes higher than our African American and some of our others. But disability is never lower. It just seems to always stay where it is. And that's been weighing on me pretty heavy. And I want to make sure that when we look at our inequities, we look at all students that are being suspended at a high rate. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Mitchell.
Well, I really appreciate that, Member Marsette. And I appreciate when Dr. Bishop says all means all. And hopefully, we will focus on all. But I have to say, I'm very proud of our board for the letter that was just approved. And it was not read. And if you will all indulge me, I'd like to read it to put it on the record, if that is okay with everybody? Okay. Statement in response to the death of George Floyd. Dear ASD community, the Anchorage School Board joins with those in our community and our nation who are saddened and outraged by the incomprehensible death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota. He is one of many deaths of other Black Americans who have died as a result of excessive police force. These acts of violence have become all too common and are fueled by systemic racism and reckless disregard for human life. These deaths have been devastating to witness, and we remain concerned for the lasting impact that they may have on all of us, most importantly, our young people. The Anchorage School Board remains committed to the health and safety of all of our students. However, this moment in our national consciousness compels us to reassure our Black and Brown students and families that their lives and experiences matter. Collectively, we condemn the long history of racism, injustice and inequities in our community and across our country. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. wrote in his letter from a Birmingham jail, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. This situation requires that we speak out, stand up and take action against any form of racism, injustice or abuse of power that threatens the success and safety of any student. More than reactively condemning these repeated tragedies, we will do all we can to prevent the next one. We are prepared to push back against hatred, discrimination and violence. The equity work in our district must boldly continue within our schools and take further actions to ensure justice and better outcomes for all students. To this end, we commit to developing anti-racism policy that will translate into programs and practices that will eradicate injustice and discrimination in our schools. This will include an ongoing review of our current policies and educational approaches to ensure all students have opportunities to learn about each other, to respect each other, to value each other, and to create a more equitable and kinder world. We commit to drafting and enacting an equity policy that represents collective goals and guides our district's equity work. We commit to ensuring that our students have safe learning environments and systems of support that are equitable and free of racial and other forms of discrimination. We commit to monitoring our instructional outcomes and systems of support to identify opportunities and remove any barriers that intentionally or unintentionally impact the opportunities of students based on the color of their skin. We commit to listening to community voices to understand concerns and hopes for just and equitable education. With these voices in mind, we will then work together toward progress that will promote our mutual and interdependent goal to educate all students for success in life. We commit to pushing back against hatred, discrimination and violence. We commit to making certain that the most vulnerable and underrepresented in our care learn and thrive in an environment that is just, free of fear and filled with opportunities and systems designed to lift them up. Finally, we extend care and empathy to all who are experiencing anger, heartbreak, fear and trauma as they process Mr. Floyd's death. We know that many are mourning with a sorrowful truth that it could one day be their own loved one who is killed. We commit to listening and learning from those who experience racism and will take responsibility for our own actions and inactions in allowing racial injustice in our learning community. But we cannot do it alone. We invite the community to partner with us as we work to improve our educational system. There is a way forward, a path filled with hope, and together we can press on toward a more peaceful and just future. And it's signed by the seven board members of the school district. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Member Mitchell. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you for reading that, Member Mitchell. I just want to share just a few comments about our focus. It is so easy to make this about one group or pit one group against the other. At this moment, we're talking about the things that we consider status quo that benefit one group of kids, one group of people over, better, and lesser than others. So we've got to, I just want us to make sure we stay focused that this moment in our history is looking at institutional racism and how it manifests itself in our practice and in our program. So it's not just one program. It's not just discipline. If we look at discipline, just discipline, we're going to miss a whole lot of other barriers that are, that are, that are there. If we just look at SROs, we're going to miss other opportunities. This is, we need to look systematically at everything, all of our policies, all of our practices. Because what we mean and what we intend is just, we just got to ask ourselves, what is the impact to all kids? So I don't want this community thinking that this is a black thing. This is a human thing that at this moment in our history is most disproportionately impacting the lives of Black men in particular. And as the mother, wife and grandmother of African American males, who have, some of whom have gone through our system and struggled, this gives us a renewed me, a renewed opportunity as a citizen and as a board member to just take a look, a deeper look. So if we don't want, so please, I just don't want us to trivialize and start jostling for, I mean, we got to look at this and we got to face what we find, ask the deep questions and move forward. And, but most importantly, it's not just up to us. It's not just up to the superintendent. It is up to this community to help us understand the impact to you, to help us understand what your hopes and dreams are. Because those are more important to me than the data. But the data helps me understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I thank the board for your partnership in the letter. I appreciate your comments, Dr. Bishop. And I'm going to quote you again, when we know better, we do better. And Anchorage, we have got to do better. We've got to do better for all of our kids. At this moment, we've got to do better for our children who are our children of color. It's not just Black kids, it's Asian kids, it's Pacific Islanders, it's our Hispanic kids, it's all of our kids. And we just can't keep doing things the way we've always done them and expect to get this marvelous thing called academic achievement for all kids. And that's all I want to say. I mean, I do appreciate the indulgence. And I do know that, that I think all of our intents are well, and we just got to, we just got to do what we got to do. And do it in a very transparent, open way where people can know that we hear them and not just guess at what they need, but try to understand it. And we're not going to meet every need, but at least we can try to understand it. So everything in that letter really is very, very important. And it will be on the website for everybody to see. And no, we're not going to always all agree. But please don't trivialize it down into just being about the SROs. That's a piece of it. It's, discipline is a piece of it. What do we do instructionally that is also a piece of it? How are our staff engaging with our students? That's another piece of it. What happens when parents come to school? That's another piece of it. So let's not, let's not try, this is not going to be an easy fix, but it will take all of us, and I know we'll do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Hildy, you are next up in the queue.
I'll just add one more thing to Member Bellamy's and how the board chooses to spend money and which, where it goes and who gets it and how we prioritize that. So I look forward to making those hard choices on behalf of all of our students and seeing children thrive. That's the goal, that's why we're here. So thank you all.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick ending notes and comments. We had an executive session that we are probably not going to get to finish up tonight. And so I will get an invite out to board members for some time next week where we also need to do our insurance renewal approval as well. So I'll try and couple those things up together. And then following that, we don't have anything on our calendar with the exception of committee meetings and, you know, our own individual council meetings and stuff like that until our board retreat in July. So at this time, I want to thank everybody for their time tonight, for, you know, bringing their hearts and minds to do the hard work for our children. And at this time, not seeing anything else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and bid everybody a meeting and bid everybody a wonderful good night. Thank you.
Night, night.